Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call the school board meeting of independent school district five forty four to order. And tonight, Matt Lenkey will be filling in as our clerk. Please roll, please.
Yes, I will. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Nellie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Steve Vigasa.
Here.
Mrs. Hermes is absent. Matt Lenkey is here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve our agenda?
This will move.
A second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, agenda approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Congratulations to the FFAA mechanics team, Dean Wilson, Joseph Rogel, Landon Crowe, and Jaden Higginson for their first place in the state in advancing to the National FFA Convention this fall for the national contest. Congratulations to the Otter and Virathon crew, having placed five teams in the top six, including first and third, at the regional competition in Detroit Lakes on May third, two thousand and twenty-three. The first-place crew was Jaden Miller, Logan Brendanberg, Clayton Pepper, Josiah Agarude, and Tommy Erickson. And the third-place crew was Olivia Swanson, Ella Roberts, Kendall Hanson, Libby Lindgren, and Alexis Wellman. Congratulations to the Ferguson Falls adapted bowling members heading to the state tournament in Brooklyn Park. Singles, Haley Merchant, Tariq Billings, Evan Kubler, and Tucker Kubler. Doubles, Nathan Graham and Zade Carlson. And a team, Tariq Billings, Evan Kubler, Ian Iverson, and Joel Polacek. Congratulations to the Ferguson Falls Area Learning Center MAPSTAR's team that competed in a variety of events at the eighteenth Annual MAPSTAR Spring Conference in Mankato, Minnesota. Twenty students competed, the largest team Ferguson has ever had in attendance. All students earn gold, silver, and bronze ribbons in one or more of their events. Following students earn medals and plaques for being in the top eight or less in their event. Community service project, Team Justin Anderson, Lily Davis, Krista Island, and Alex Donaldson placed first. Team video promotion, Team Shane Bauer, Grady Palacio, and Alicia Sandbig placed first. Entrepreneurship, Team Andy Bach and Sydney Viller placed first. Job manual, Finn McCarver placed first. Career portfolio, Callie Carsten placed first. Employment interview, Shane Bauer placed fifth, Andy Bach placed sixth. Jessie Correo placed seventh, and Krista Island placed eighth. Thank you to Barry and Pamela Becker and Starla Clausvig for their donations to the Otter Angel Account, an account created to anonymously assist families on a monthly for student meals. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
And Matt, would you call?
Yep. Nellie Knudsen.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Steve Vigasa.
Yes.
Matt Lenkey, yes? Missing?
Kirby Anderson.
Kirby Anderson, thank you. I almost missed somebody. Resolution passes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our report tonight. And our first report will be from Amelia Lamar, curriculum director.
Okay, good evening. Happy May to each of you. Thanks for having me here. This evening I will be sharing the remainder of the seventh through twelfth grade English proposal. Recall that I was here on the first part of that back in February. I will present Common Lit for grades nine through twelve. Know that that's been very beneficial to our high school teachers, having access to their teacher accounts in order to prepare for next year. So thank you for that from all of us. There we go. It has been a long but positive process to get here today. Our English teachers in grades seven through twelve have spent countless hours evaluating, meeting with vendors, piloting, researching a variety of different instructional resources to best fit the needs of their students. Their passion and dedication to each of their students is truly incredible. Some of the guiding principles we focused on during this process was ensuring that any potential resources were developmentally appropriate. It would, there was the potential of being aligned to Minnesota standards, and that there were differentiation options to meet the individual interest and needs of each student. The newest English Language Arts Standards from the state of Minnesota contain three strands to which all of the new standards are organized into. Those include reading, writing, as well as a kind of combined category that's titled Listening, Speaking, Viewing, and Exchanging Ideas. So the following resources that were selected by our seventh through twelfth grade teachers were selected with those three strands in mind to ensure that the expectations from the state can be met across a variety of English courses. So our process began with reviewing the current resources that are currently available to seventh through twelfth grade teachers. We first looked at the degree at which the current materials could support the updated state standards. I had mentioned to you back in February that there were multiple sets of textbooks and resources from the late nineties, early two thousands that mentioned the information highway and the introduction of computers into the classroom. So we were due for an update. From there, teachers again piloted various options. They collaborated over their, about their effectiveness. And they narrowed down, narrowed it down to which options would best fit the needs of them as the teachers as well as their students. And then the entire process ended with an evaluation and approval from the middle and high school administration. As you can see, we viewed a, excuse me, reviewed and piloted a variety of resources which were narrowed down to the four on the right. And those four include Common Lit, No Red Ink, Reading Plus, and a few different technology-related resources. So Common Lit has already been adopted for high school. Expanding this resource into seventh and eighth grade will allow for consistency in instruction and open opportunities for teachers to collaborate more effectively as they help prepare students to leave middle school and enter into high school. All paper pencil documents and text are available to print within each lesson. This resource can provide adequate teaching of the standards while adjusting to individual student needs. There isn't, excuse me, an appropriate balance of paper and pencil to digital work to help keep students engaged while also developing their digital as well as handwritten skills. As teachers continue to plan their courses, they will also continue to create physical binders of the lessons from Common Lit to create a teacher manual assortment to allow for easy copying and differentiation options as well. I've already presented the details of this program to you, but I just want to re-highlight a few of them if that's okay. Slide decks, for example, are available for each lesson. It is very well organized and guided to create clear instructions for students as well as guides for teachers themselves. Assessments are available and can be differentiated by need, including the type of question, whether that's short answer, matching multiple choice, et cetera. Font size, if it's read aloud, and so on. Independent practice, excuse me, also allows for each of these differentiation options and then some. All of these options are available digitally and via print. Translations are also available, which can provide for a major asset for our ESL department to support our students who are learning English. This can help create kind of a direct bridge between the general education classroom and the ESL classroom for those students. Mr. Anderson, the high school principal, has had the opportunity to dive quite deeply into this resource as he looked to help create some lessons for some long-term subpositions. And he does send along his positive remarks of this resource as he too was quite impressed by it. So to summarize Common Lit, Common Lit in grades seven and eight would allow for increased collaboration among teachers and consistency for both teachers and students as they leave middle school and enter high school. Next up is No Red Ink. No Red Ink is a comprehensive grammar and writing resource. There is a free version that many of our teachers are using. However, the limitations of the free version are, aren't quite enough. You don't get the data. You don't get the differentiation pieces that come with the entirety of the program. No Red Ink is highly engaging for students and is highly differentiated as well. Content can be filtered to meet specific standards as well as ideas such as ACT prep and so forth. Depending on student need, guided prompts are available, which is pictured to the right there, to assist students through each part of the writing process. The same does go for grammar as well, as students continue to refine and expand upon those skills as well through proofreading and editing of their own and provided works. There is a parent portal that is available, so parents can log in and see live updates of their child's writing as well as grammar and writing, and they can really get a good idea of where their student is at in each of those skills. Being a site license, this would be available to all English teachers in grades seven through twelve to support grammar and writing instruction. Reading Plus is being proposed for seventh through twelfth grade special education students. This program is being compared to Alex, which is the highly adaptive math program that we adopted last year. And this is the reading version of that essentially. It is directly related to student interests, so they go through a short quiz at the beginning. And they can select from a wide variety of topics that interest them, such as specific sports, music, foods, space, career fields, and so on. These interests can be changed as students grow, or they change their minds. Content is then filtered to support the instructional concepts that are selected by the teacher, but while using the interests that were provided by the students. Being proposed for special education, this is a major asset. Many of the students in this area struggle greatly with reading and are discouraged by the content as a whole. So giving them that sense of leadership, choosing the topics that they get to read about and that are of interest to them is a great way to engage them in. Reading Plus would support the individual student within their own level. There is an AI built into it similar to Alex that adjusts to their individual needs. So while the teacher might be teaching the whole group instruction on a certain topic, problem, solution, cause and effect, whatever it is, when they go to do their independent practice then on Reading Plus, the teacher can assign that content. However, it will provide that content or that skill to the student at their individual level using texts that are of interest to them. Reading Plus is highly intelligent and in a, I mean, to be honest, it's an incredibly valuable resource to special education teachers and students. Last part of the four parts here is a technology request. On the left there, you can see a list of materials to enhance and support the video productions class. Video productions is an elective course in grades eleven and twelve within the English department. This course is drastically growing in interest and enrollment, which provides the need for additional equipment. Each of these resources are compatible with the video editing software this course uses and will allow more students to create and edit their digital materials at a time. These resources will improve the efficiency and learning that takes place within these courses. To the right there are Promethean boards. And Promethean boards are being requested to continue to provide consistency across the district. Last year, Promethean boards were adopted for math teachers across the district as a part of the math proposal. This is simply the same request but for seventh through twelfth grade English teachers. Again, to provide more consistency for students and teachers from classroom to classroom. Each of the resources I just presented to you are compatible with Promethean boards. And that consistency from classroom to classroom could benefit students, teachers, and the district as a whole. Okay, to summarize all of that, the seventh through twelfth grade English department is proposing the adoption of these here listed resources. These each fit, or combined, they fit comfortably within the allotted budget. And our English teachers are very excited about them. So thank you for taking the time to evaluate the resources I sent you and for listening to all of this information. I will now accept questions from the board.
So each of these are eight-year contracts? And so we do the payments right upfront?
Correct.
And like you said, there's no recurring costs? There's no maintenance costs really?
Correct.
And then after eight years, if we decide to continue with that, there would be another?
Yes, that will lead up to the next seventh through twelfth grade English review.
Any other questions for Amelia?
These are part of the budget we've gone through before.
Okay. I'm sure it also includes professional development and ongoing training for teachers as well.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks. All right, our next report is Kirby Anderson.
Okay, I have nothing from the Activities Committee or from the Finance Committee right now. I will report on the five four four Education Foundation Committee. Probably the soonest thing is the part of the foundation, they participate in the Senior Recognition Ceremony, which is tonight at seven o'clock. We also have a retired staff reunion coming up on May eighteenth. And I believe that's going to be over in the old Media Center where Community Ed is. Yes, that's where it is. We sent out a newsletter about three weeks ago. We also have an alumni committee that we're going to have a distinguished alumni again later this year. And we picked two people, and I'm not going to say who they are until next time. I want to make sure that they've done all the contacts. And we also have, the Legions Committee has been meeting. And we have, one of our major fundraisers is going to be on July fourteenth at the golf course. It's a Friday, I believe. As far as financial, the foundation is currently sitting at about one point seven, seven million dollars. And I think that we had also talked about doing some American education week teacher gifts. And so that's really about it. And then our next meeting is this Thursday at noon, and I believe it's going to be a Zoom meeting. I think Jeff will probably come.
Yes.
So, any questions or comments? Oh, and the Finance Committee, we haven't met as a Finance Committee. We've, Matt has been doing a couple of those. I think everybody should do whatever they can to convey our thoughts on the mandates and what some of the current legislation being proposed is. Because there's not going to be much new money if we don't, if we have to put up with, or if we have to, okay, put up with is a good word, with a lot of the, a lot of the conditions that are being attached to those dollars. So do what you can to talk to whoever you can. That's all.
Thanks. All right, next board report is Melanie Cole.
We had our Special Education Cooperative Board meeting today. And it was a skinny agenda, but included the resignation from the director, Jeff Ward. She has resigned effective June thirtieth. And so we had a longer period of discussion at the end of the business meeting to talk about next steps. And there was a proposal to have an interim director to kind of steady the ship a bit and wait until, you know, January, February in hopes that the pool of candidates is refreshed at that point. So, so that was our primary objective there. The other board report is Region One, which we did not have an actual business meeting last month because we lacked the forum, first time ever. So several board members aren't good about responding and, and then canceled at the last minute. But we did review several items, always a topic about staffing changes and the different activities of the Region One board, but nothing significant to do there. So that's about it.
Any questions for Melanie? Thank you. My next board report is pretty uneventful. Wellness Committee has not met in buildings and grounds, has not met formally. Jeff will be touching on a couple of end pieces in his report, so nothing from me. Our next one is Matt Lesky.
Yeah, Minnesota High School League is meeting in June. But I would like just to bring up one quick thing on Central Lakes Conference that I think kind of got maybe glossed over a little bit. Is that one of the things that Central Lakes Conference does is that they have a sportsmanship award given out to teams. It's voted on by competitive teams and competitive schools. So for example, those in girls hockey or boys hockey or, or baseball, if you have a team in the Central Lakes, which we're the smallest school in the Central Lakes Conference, there's, there's nine of us, each team gets to vote on who they thought represented their school district, represented their really good sports about how they participated and played and for respect. And this has been going on since nineteen ninety-seven. We joined in two thousand and six, so we joined ten years later. And just because I think it's important that we talk about not only about competition, but how we play and how our, how our athletes compete and how our school goes about things is, we just went over the century mark this fall of a hundred sportsmanship awards. And we took the lead from everybody else this year also. Knowing that we came in at two thousand and six, so basically ten years later than everybody else. And so I just thought it was something to bring up. It was, I thought it was neat to see volleyball was the one that put us over a hundred. So kudos to volleyball and everybody else in the past and, and going forward. So I just thought it was something to bring up that I thought was, sometimes gets glossed over a little bit, and yet is something that I think that we can, as a community and definitely as a, as a school district, can be proud of.
Thank you. All right, next board report will be Steve Vigasa.
Well, Curriculum Review, Amelia kind of took care of my report for me tonight. So really, the only significant thing that happened during that meeting was, was the recommendation to change the, or to purchase the English curriculum that we just heard about. So that's the last time the Curriculum Review will be meeting this year. So my reports are going to be even more boring going forward until the fall. So that's all I have to report on that. Did you want me to talk about policy or do you want to just wait until we get to the?
It's up to you.
So the policy meeting, we met a couple of times. The policy that we were looking at is the library media material selection. And we just, we just made some enhancements and some tweaks on it. And in a nutshell, the restricting of materials is going to be placed on the parents that want them restricted. So kids are opted in for materials that are considered mature, which we will be going through a collection and marking them that way. But particular parents don't want their kids to be reading those materials. They can contact the school and that can be arranged. And we figured that way it protects everybody in a sense. So that was the biggest change in that. Other than adding language that you have to be from the district, you have to be connected to the district, either a student, an employee of the district, a parent or guardian. What was your last?
District president?
District resident.
And there's a formal process?
Yeah, the formal process has been tightened up a bit. So it just makes a lot, I mean, this policy has been around for, hasn't been touched for about twenty years. And so it's just needed a refresh, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
I think there was a couple of changes too to the selection process of, of the trails going forward as well. I think we just changed a couple of things that were included.
As far as adding new books to the collection?
Yeah, yeah.
The biggest changes that were, help me on this one a little bit, because I don't know if we touched that a whole bit, because it was more just putting that responsibility on the Media Center Director and trusting.
So the Media Center Generalist will have, carry the responsibility of flagging books that may contain mature content? So they'll be flagged as they come in?
Right, that was a check.
Yeah. That's the biggest thing.
And correlated to that, do, did our media specialist say if there's a way to use the Destiny Library System to identify which kids are opted in or out? Can that be computer generated?
Yes.
No. Well, so he's exploring a couple of options. So the one option would be if, would be if the current system could push a text or an email out to parent guardian, so they know what book has been checked out. And the other option is if a parent opts out to a flagged book, that we either have an opt-out list that they would reference when that child or that student is going to be checking the book out or having that, yeah, having them in the system. So there was a couple of technology pieces that needed to be checked in due at this point, to see what the capabilities are.
Okay. He seemed, he seemed to think it wasn't going to be able to, he just didn't have like, yes, we could do this, we can everything.
Flagging the books isn't an issue.
No, that's easy.
That was really easy. It would just be how to, what the process would be to identify.
Okay. Yeah, at Region One, I mentioned the director up there that wondered about the library system because he specializes in that as well. And to see if it could just be computer generated, that would take the onus off of our library director. He said it's quite likely, but we need to provide a little bit more information. I imagine Roy can do that right with Destiny Library System himself, but Bob's willing to help if.
Thanks.
Yeah, but he thinks that's feasible, so.
So I know it's just the policies being, we're just talking about the policy now. So the procedures is always different than the policy. So I'm not expecting us to have the answer today. But on the procedure for parents to opt in, I take it this will be just, eventually at some point in time, parents, new parents come, so it's just one of those things, just how they will know about that option somehow and.
It being the, well, we talked about during the registration process adding a line item.
Beginning of the school year with all the forms.
Okay.
So even a parent that is open to their child reading mature content, maybe they're, maybe they have a fifth grader that reads at a higher level, then they can still opt out. Child doesn't have access until they get to the point where.
Sure.
But that's kind of what we were thinking was just with the forms in the school year.
Yeah. It'd be probably the easiest way to do it.
As far as there's just a way that parents, I don't think that's a good way, so.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on to Superintendent Drake.
All right, good evening. There's a lot of slides tonight. There's a lot going on at the end of the school year, but most of it's fairly short stuff. So thank yous. We had principal, a lot of appreciation days are rolling in late April, May. So we had Principal Appreciation Day last week and appreciate all the leadership at the building level that goes on. And so it's a strong administrative team and again, thankful for all the work they do. We had National Teacher Appreciation Day last week. That was last Wednesday, if I remember correctly. So we gave a shout out to our teachers. And this is Teacher Appreciation Week, so they're in close juxtaposition. Perhaps next week they will overlap in the same week, but for this year, Teacher Appreciation Day last week, Appreciation Week this week. And we certainly have a very dedicated and talented staff. We got to enjoy during our resolutions, some of the remarkable achievements of our students. And I'll touch on a few more of those in a couple of minutes. But we really have had a pretty remarkable spring for student academic achievements. So it's really been enjoyable to see what our students are accomplishing under the teacher's guidance. Lunch Heroes, School Lunch Hero Day was last Friday. So thank you for all of our food service folks, for all the aid. So thank you for all of our food service folks for all they do. And our students really do have a ton of options, especially at KSS, for various meals during the course of the year. So thankful for the variety. Administrative Professionals Day was a couple of weeks back. And just again, thanks for all of the help that our office support staff provide for us. They are the first often faces people see when they come into the district. And their ability to give people a warm welcome and help them navigate the system and get them what they need and where they need to go is much appreciated. And this Wednesday will be National School Nurse Day. And so a little bit of a preliminary thanks for all the work of our school nurses. Hopefully, they have felt a little bit of a respite this year on the backside of the pandemic. So we certainly have made much use of them over the last couple of years with all that's been going on. I want to thank everyone that worked the prom. We had a lot of couples registered and hopefully all the students had a very nice evening. And then thanks to the parents and the community members for doing the post-prom festivities. I want to do thanks to the students that took part in the polar plunge. They raised over seven thousand dollars for Special Olympics. And it was a if the water wasn't cold enough, it was kind of a overcast dreary day when they did the plunge as well. So appreciate all the work that they did. Want to thank everyone that was associated with the Touch of Truck event. That was part of our preschool offerings and those little kids really like to see the big fire trucks and police cars and all those kinds of pieces of equipment. So appreciate all the time that went into that. And then some congratulatory notes. We mentioned our ag mechanics team taking first in the state. Wonderful feather in the cap of that program. So congratulations and thanks to Melody and Dennis for their leadership. We mentioned also the Envirothon, first, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth places at the competition in Detroit Lakes. Pretty darn remarkable. And places one through four will be competing at state here on the fifteenth. And there's photos of the three teams that will be going on for state competition. We talked about the MAP Stars. They sent twenty kids down. That was the largest number that had ever competed. And a number of those students were recognized with first place finishes in both team and individual events. And then Adaptive Bowling had a very successful outing at the end of last week. And a number of those participants are going on to state as well. And special appreciation to Scott Meldal, who is their coach. Congratulations to Mindy Christensen. Mindy was the NEA Foundation Teacher of Excellence representative or selection from Minnesota. And she attended a gala recently. And very well deserving, very proud of the work that she does. Then Mary Rosted was recognized recently by the Minnesota Driver and Traffic Safety Education Association at its fifty-sixth annual conference. And she received their Teacher of Excellence Award. And this is over her life of her career for all the work she's done on driver's ed program. Senior Recognition Night is tonight. That's always a very nice event headed by our Activities Office with some assistance also from the Five Forty-four Foundation. We had some seventh grade honors breakfast that was held at KSS recently and also an eighth grade honors breakfast. So thanks to all those students. This was done based on their GPAs. So all these students off to a very, very bright academic start in junior high slash middle school. We sent some students to Conservation Days at the Walker Lake Fish Hatchery. And I used to live very close to the Walker Lake Fish Hatchery. And that's a pretty neat place to visit when the spawning season comes. So I'm sure our students enjoyed seeing how that harvesting of the eggs and then putting them in the tanks so they become fry and then minnows is pretty fascinating stuff. MDE will be visiting us at Lincoln School on Wednesday afternoon. And this was part of Commissioner Jet's outreach initiatives. So a couple, probably a month ago, I completed a voluntary survey and just said, basically, if you would like the department to come and visit your district and see what you guys are doing to fill out the survey and send it in. And so they contacted me late last week and said, we're coming Wednesday. And I had wanted them to see Lincoln School for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted them to see firsthand what can be done with a repurposed box store. And then I also wanted them to see the programming that's taking place there as well. This is kind of old news, but I keep forgetting to mention it to people. So this was through a grant and it was through Lakes Country Service Co-op. But we received a ShopSaver CNC router. And this was delivered probably now about a month ago, I would say. Took quite a while in the production cycle to get to us. But that's going to be a nice piece of equipment. Those CNC routers really do some amazing work and it kind of highlights both technical skills and the creative side for students in our programs. On the facility management, this is unbelievable, but I have a changed update for you on the chiller project. So I had mentioned early Saturday morning that our power was going to be shut off over the weekend so that a temporary chiller system could be installed using one of the two units. Then at some point, Mike got in communication that said the real deal, the switchgear that we need and had been waiting for for close to a year is shipped. It has a tracking number and it is supposed to arrive on May tenth. So barring some catastrophe in route, we'll have the switchgear on the tenth that will give a couple of weeks for that to be hooked up. And then the startup and commissioning will be scheduled for May twenty-third. So now with this switchgear, we're not talking about a temporary situation. This will run both units. It will fully cool KSS as soon as it's up and running. So that has just been a topsy-turvy project now and it's we're really, really close to having it done. And then I want to talk briefly about Love and Logic. So we had looked at various SEL curriculums, character development, those kinds of things. And the principals each presented at the last DACRAC meeting on their plans for next year. And the DACRAC committee had the opportunity to give the board feedback. K through two teachers went a little different route. So Love and Logic is a little difficult to explain. I wouldn't call it SEL, although it has some SEL type features to it. You could call it partially a classroom management kind of philosophy or a student management kind of philosophy. You could call it a little bit like PBIS where you're setting expectations in the classroom and for other parts of the building. But in a nutshell, really what it is, is a philosophy where it's relational. So it's built on the strength of the relationship between student and teacher. And it's built on choice and decision making. And so as students make choices that are either producing positive results for them or maybe not so positive, it's about reviewing those choices and the outcomes they have and helping the students to accept the consequences for the decisions they make and guiding them to make good decisions in the future. So Kathy Smith is a certified trainer. She's on staff. And if the board were to support this curriculum for well, it's not really even a curriculum. There are nine kind of skills, but it's really more of a philosophy. So there's some training involved, but it's training on how to create a classroom environment that supports this philosophy. And so that's what they're asking to proceed with on the K-two side. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake?
Just a couple of things. We is there any chance that we could move that commissioning up a little further this way with graduation essay? Or is that pretty much a firm date or later? Say later would be worse.
We could ask, but it was coordinated with ATS and R. And they have another agent that they've hired as part of this that's part of the commissioning as well. So there are about three or four parties that all have to get their
Sure.
stuff to line up.
Just looking because it doesn't Tuesday and we have graduation Thursday, Friday.
I can sure ask. We've got a meeting tomorrow.
One other question. Is there when we have warmer days like they are coming up on Wednesday, it's gonna be seventy-nine. So do our maintenance staff, are they cooling the building down as much as they can at night?
So we don't hear as much of. And then we try to live off that cool air as long as we can. Yep. In fact, we're fairly well experts on that.
I think that was the case. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, no, that's good clarification.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our general consent items. And we have the minutes from our April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three board meeting. And then we'll go to Kirby for the bills and treasuries report.
Okay, treasures report. Our fund balance is sitting at just under sixteen million, which is just slightly slightly less than it was last month. And about four hundred thousand higher than it was last year at this time. So we're still in pretty good shape financially. Community ed is is down a little bit, but they're still in the positives. So that's a good thing. Steve came in early today and we met with Renee to go through the bills, seven pages of bills. Some of the it's nice to see some some money going out for the fishing league and the bass federation. Some of the things for activities that we haven't seen for a while. There was just over a hundred thousand dollars for Metropolitan Mechanical, which is associated with the chiller. I think forty-six fifty went out for the ALC kitchen and another project that was nice to see done. Just under four hundred thousand dollars to the carrier for the chiller itself. The other hundred thousand was more for the contractor. Twenty-seven thousand for the van trip, which will be a pass through covered between boosters and parents and so on. Hopefully, we don't see any more of this. Seven thousand dollars to one vendor for snow removal. And another sixty-eight hundred for to another vendor for snow removal. So we're hoping not to see any more of those bills. Other than that, nothing nothing really out of the ordinary this month. Seven thousand dollars for a new firewall. I think the you know, our IT people do a really good job of, you know, with with the sign-ons and with the passwords and the firewall. I know I think it was Rochester we were talking about. They had a they had a ransomware thing that got into their system and totally wiped everything out for a few days. They couldn't do anything. So hats off to our to our tech staff for doing all that. So thanks, Steve, for coming in early and Renee for having everything in order.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to personnel. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I have a number of items here and so I'll go over them quickly. All the details again are listed in our agenda, which will also be placed on our minutes on our website. Certified staff resignation, Nathan Aron, Social Studies teacher here at Kennedy. Certified staff contract agreement and retirement. Separation agreement and release of all claims between Ferguson Falls Public Schools, ISD Five Forty-four and Michelle Oliphant and a request to retire effective June eighth. Certified staff leave of absence requested by Nancy Reer for a one-year leave of absence as a special ed teacher during this upcoming school year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Individual administrative contract revision to the twenty-two, twenty-four agreement between the Ferguson Schools and the special administrator Nancy Reer changing her ETE for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to full-time, one ETE. Current issues at a point four for this year. Support staff retirement, Kathleen Anderson, food service. And we do have a resolution later on in our agenda. And Kathleen has been employed with us for fourteen years. So thank her for that service. Support staff resignations, Lisa Swenson, para educator in our health office. Natasha Wick, Wick, excuse me, special ed paraprofessional at Kennedy and Fran Stone, our supervisor at Cleveland. And under support staff hires, Myrna Manoza, long-term substitute at para educator at Adams effective basically from today through the end of the school year. And then Sarah McClure, a para educator at ALC and that will be effective today. So I would recommend all those for school board approval.
So busy.
That time of year.
Can I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That motion passes. We don't have any old business. We'll move on to new business. I have an invitation for fiscal year twenty-four quotes for milk and related projects. Could I get a motion to approve this?
I I mean that we sent out invitation for milk quotes and related items.
And could I get a second?
Second it.
Any discussion on this?
I'm just disappointed.
That's true.
So disappointed. So moved.
I can't move every year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That is approved. We have a request for fiscal year twenty-four food service bids. Could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That request is approved. We have the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school calendar for IQ Academy. Could someone?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Close opposed, say nay. That is approved. Could I get a we have approval of highest bid received on May tenth, twenty-twenty-three for land lease agreement with ISD Five Forty-four effective May fifteenth through November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. Could I get a motion to approve that bid?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that?
What what was the highest bid that we? Oh, received on May tenth, today's only page.
Yeah, I'm doing it right here on May tenth.
Also whichever one.
Yeah, whichever one is highest one's the one that.
Gotcha.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That approval is approved. Proposed adoption of the seven-twelve English curriculum, Common Lit, Reading Plus, No Red Ink, including video productions, resources, and technology. Do I get a motion to approve that proposal?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That proposal is approved. We have a proposed adoption of the Love and Logic framework for grades K-two. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second it.
Any discussion?
Just want to verify, is our principal going to be then trained in this also to become like a master on this so that he can? As we have staff coming in and out either through subbing or whatever, that at least the common language and expectations and things like that continue to happen within the two buildings?
Yeah, that's important.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That proposed adoption is approved. We have a revision to the school board policy six-thirty, district library media center materials selection. Could I get a motion to approve that revision?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Any additional discussion from what we had earlier? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close opposed, say nay. That revision is approved. MDE review and comment document for Lincoln Phase Two project. MDE Review and Comment Document for Lincoln Phase Two Project. Could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
I just hope they're fast getting it back as the, yes.
That's right.
Maybe we've done this one long enough.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is passed. We have a resolution on the retirement of Kathleen Anderson. Whereas Kathleen Anderson began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in September 2009. And whereas Kathleen has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for 14 years. And whereas Kathleen has been a dedicated food service employee for the school district. And now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Kathleen Anderson for her 14 years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Could I get someone to offer that resolution?
I'll lock that resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
A second.
Clerk, will you do roll?
Yes, Steve Bigasa.
Yes.
Matt Limkey, yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Nellie Knutson.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Thank you. We have another resolution on the retirement of Michelle Oliphant. Whereas Michelle Oliphant began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in August 1996. And whereas Michelle has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past 27 years. And whereas Michelle has been a dedicated special education teacher for the district. And now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Michelle Oliphant for her 27 years of service to the Fergus Falls Public School System. Someone offer that?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
Thank you.
And I will second that.
You, please take a roll, please.
Yes, Steve Bigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Nellie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matt Limkey, yes. Resolution passes.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Our next regular school board meeting is Monday, May 22nd, 2023 at 5:15 here in the Otter Community Room. Our work session attending is just a public comment with Debbie Wammen. And so could I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
No second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.